The time is now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, October 21st, 2019. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We are all here.
Do that already.
Yeah, I knew that. Ms. Demming.
(laughing).
Wow.
Creatures of habit.
Ms. Demming, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe you have, maybe Mr. Lewis can lead the pledge next time.
We now move to our board's salutes.
Ms. Demming, I know you have one.
I have a board salute and I'm so pleased that the, oh.
Take the podium, take the podium.
I don't know why I'm standing up.
(laughing).
It's a long day.
Why am I standing up? I'm so pleased that the subject of our board salute is actually here this evening, Dr. Natalie Johnson. Would you please stand? Matea Valley teacher receives Presidential Award for Excellence in Teaching. The board is pleased to salute Matea Valley teacher, Dr. Natalie Johnson, who recently received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. This award is the highest honor bestowed by the United States government specifically for K through 12 teachers of science, technology, engineering, and math, and recognizes teachers who have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. And I thank you, President Rising, that you allowed me to share this. She is, we're so pleased for her and she happens to be a personal friend, so I was very pleased to be able to share this. So, congratulations Natalie.
(applause).
You've got her little thing if you want to look at it, right?
Oh, did you receive something?
Oh, wow. You got a White House tour and everything, didn't you?
Oh, wow, yes.
Let's see.
You can't mistake that signature.
This is a really big deal.
Yeah, that's huge.
You're going on parade now. Very nice, very nice.
This is really a big deal.
Very nice.
Well, can't top that.
Ms. Grover?
The board salutes physical education teacher Derrick Beal from Patterson Elementary on being awarded the Young Professional of the Year Award in the Northeastern District of Illinois by the Illinois Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. The award is given to physical education teachers who show exemplary teaching in the field of physical education who have been teaching for five years or less. Congratulations to Derrick Beal.
For the public, I'm going to ask.
We have our student representative.
Oh, thank you. I do have one more report, and that's the Student Representative Report by Chris Chung from Wobomzie Valley High School. Welcome, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Go Warriors!
Go Warriors. Thank you, Mr. President. The first quarter of, the first quarter at Wobomzie has brought a lot of pride and spirit to the halls, and it's quite obvious that the students are having a great experience with that. To start off, I want to talk about like the activities at Wobomzie. Our building has just finished up a week-long homecoming celebration with the theme of When in Rome. The weekend was filled with spirit as on Monday, we had Dancing with the Warriors. Tuesday was Powder Puff and Thursday was the Friday Show. Friday was the All-School Assembly, the football game, the Hall of Fame introduction, and then Saturday brought the dance. Regarding the dance, a record number, a record-breaking 1,800 students came to celebrate Wobomzie's 44th Homecoming. All week long, brought staff and students participating in themed days as well. My personal favorite was Comfy Day. The PSAT was also just finished, and we're now looking forward to the Veterans Day Assembly, to which we'd like to extend an invitation to each board member for the November 11th 9:00 AM Assembly. You should have received an email about the invitation, and we'd love to have you present as we look at the theme of Decision to Serve. In terms of athletics this year, Wobomzie Valley Athletics had had their Hall of Fame Ceremony prior to the homecoming football game Friday, October 11th. The Hall of Fame class of 2019 included Julia Bond, Girls Bowling Class of 14, Austin Guido, Football Class of 13, and Herschel Dixon, Football Basketball and Track Class of 97. As well as the 2008 Undefeated Girls Soccer State Champions, and Girls and Boys Cross Country just hosted the DVC Meeting at Wobomzie this last weekend. Currently, the Boys Cross Country Team is ranked 10th in the state. Girls Swimming has placed second at the West Chicago Invite and is looking to finish strong heading into the DVC and IHSA Sectionals. Girls Tennis has hosted the DVC Conference Meeting on Saturday on October 12th and competed well. The team competed in IHSA Sectionals this weekend at Naperville North High School. Football hosted Matea Valley on October 18th, this last Friday. We won, by the way. Hopefully, the boys will finish with the season strong. Boys Golf fell short of qualifying as a state team for the second year in a row, but two individuals, Will Troy and Jacob Fritz, competing, are competing at a state level this past week, or competed at state this past weekend. The Boys Golf Team qualified for IHSA Sectionals and were DVC Champions. Girls Volleyball continues to play well and is currently in first place as the, heading into the DVC in the last week of DVC Play. Wobomzie will host Girls Volleyball IHSA Regionals on October 29th and 31st. Boys Soccer's had a successful season as well and has finished conference play with a 1-1 tie against Matea Valley. The boys will open up IHSA Regional Play on Wednesday, October 23rd, at Oswego High School. And lastly, academics, academics is always a pride for the Warriors. This year, we celebrate 11 National Merit Semi-finalists, 18 Accommodation Awards, and three perfect ACT scores. Knowing we're the smallest high school in the area, yet we put up similar numbers to our counterparts, this is evidence that Wobomzie's doing great things academically. That is all for the Wobomzie Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors.
Thanks, Chris.
Got a cheery pants.
The reason for us being a bit discombobulated is I think the board understands my desire to move one of our agenda items, discussion, number nine, Discussion Item A, Proposed TIF for 75th Street and Ogden Avenue Joint Review Board on October 30th, 2019. To move that agenda item, right now, our attorney, Arias Dalianis, is here today. I know he has another meeting, board meeting to go to later tonight, and so, in respect for his time, if it's the board's pleasure, can we move that item?
Please do.
You can just come up here to the podium.
Oh, sure.
It'll be easier.
Well, thank you for accommodating my schedule. Wanted to just recap where we've been and where we're heading with respect to the proposed Cedarwood TIF development that the city of Aurora is looking at for the triangular 33-acre or so parcel at Ogden and 75th Street. As you know, the board has been talking about TIF since at least the latter part of last year. There was a presentation to the board that I had done. There's been a number of conversations with the city with respect to this TIF, the planned development, the desire to use TIF funding to build a new road to connect Ogden and 75th. And so, the Joint Review Board meeting is coming up a week from Wednesday on October 30th in the morning. The district is a member of the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board is a, provides a recommendation to the city council. It's not a binding situation, but it addresses the issue of eligibility. And at this point, we have been in discussions with the city. There have been numerous meetings that I've attended, Dr. Sullivan, Jay Strang, Mr. Razak, others, and I would recommend at this point, for purposes of the JRB, the district's representative would vote no at the JRB, and that the ultimate TIF approval won't happen until either late this year or early 2020. But given the dynamics of our discussions, I think that would be the prudent vote at this juncture. So, I don't need any sort of a vote from the board, but just a general consensus that that's the direction you'd like to follow. And if there is any questions?
Questions or discussion?
We passed this great resolution, Mark, that I wrote, March 4th, 2019, that dealt with just this issue generally, not specifically to Aurora or Naperville or any particular development. Resolution in support of economic development in partnership with the schools. We talked about, we resolved to support economic development and redevelopment in our district, to support partnerships with local units of government, to oppose any reduction in the district's access to local property tax revenue, oppose any reduction in the district's property tax base, oppose any tax increment financing or other economic incentive without the approval of the district, advocate for legislation consistent with the above, and advocate with local units of government consistent with the above. I think voting no in this particular instance is consistent with that resolution, and I would like to see the district do so.
I guess I do want to reinforce, and I think it is important, that when we work on difficult topics like this, that it's important to have ongoing communication. And I would reinforce what you said, that ongoing communication has occurred with the city. We continue to work with them, but generally, not generally, I really do, we passed this resolution. I think voting no would be consistent with that resolution.
I agree.
Yeah, and just to Justin's point as well, I think all of us want to see economic development in our district. You know, with TIFs though, as Justin had mentioned, that's a 23-year factor, that's factored into the equalized assessed value, and that's revenue that the district receives that we would no longer receive for 23 years. So, in support of our resolution, and what I voted yes for that resolution, I would also have to vote no on this.
I agree with, I agree with what they're all saying, that we voted yes for the resolution, and it would be taking away funds from the school district. So, I agree with.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm in agreement. I think we all are very supportive of economic development continued within our area. You know, just want to ensure that we don't have financing taken away from the school district, so I'm definitely in support of what we, the resolution that we had agreed to in March, and I vote as well no.
How about that? I agree. I agree that we need to continue the conversations with the city of Aurora as we do with the city of Naperville and Bolingbrook and Plainfield. We have to keep those communications open, and it is a two-way street. They need to understand where we're coming from as far as protecting as a trustee of this district and the trustee of all the finances, that we have to protect our interests there.
So, I think there's clear consensus.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now move back to the agenda. So, it is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you're here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item, but I'll work on that. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. First speaker, and we ask that you come to the podium, Jody Trendler.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hello. This is my first time talking at a school board meeting. This is exciting. I am just here to offer gratitude to you all and to Mr. DePaul for moving forward with the plans, considering the plans for the solar installation at Matea Valley. So, I've heard through the grapevine that this is coming up on an agenda item to be voted on soon, and I am ecstatic. It is a process that I initiated April of, when did we start that? April of 18? Todd? Yeah. So, April of 18, started the whole ball of wax, and I'm so glad to see it coming to, finally coming to fruition. So, thank you all. This is such a wonderful opportunity for our schools, for our students, and for our communities. So, I am a representative of the Naperville Environmental Task Force. I am a co-chair of that, and just wanted to also let you know, give you a heads up, that we are working on making it possible so that, trying to get PPAs in for Naperville as well, so that hopefully this could also work for Nequa, which would be wonderful. So, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Amit Shakua, I think. Welcome.
Thank you for giving the afternoon talk here today. I'm also here supporting the project that you're going to be voting on, on your next agenda, next month. I'm very excited to see this come to fruition, and I was with Jody back in April. I was one of the companies that gave that original proposal. And so, you know, I'm a renewable energy enthusiast. I've been doing this for 20 years, and you know, I have, you should know that the incentives have changed since last year, so just be aware of that. And you know, I've left my original company, which was IPS Solar, and I have my own renewable energy company called Renewable Energy Evolution, and I've prepared an updated pro forma for that. So, if you're interested, I can hand that out, but we also do workforce development. I've been a professor of renewable energy, and I do workforce development for Chicago Urban League, as well as for St. Augustine College, and, you know, a few others. And so, we can, what we can do is integrate this regardless of whichever company you go with, we can help you with the curriculum side, bring solar into the classroom, because that's what I've been doing. We can go with the, you know, NCCER, which is the National Center for Construction Research and Education. They have certified programs to get NAPSAP certified for students. So, I can work with your faculty to actually, you know, career technology faculty to bring solar into the classroom, get these kids certified and in a pathway to get into COD or even beyond in jobs. And I'm working with COD and a few other colleges. My program at Triton College is being launched as we speak next year. So, we can bring that into the classroom as well. Besides just saving energy and going green, you also have the big job component of this because solar is a big job growth industry right now. So, just wanted to support you on this, and I, congratulations, and I'm excited for our community. I live right here. This is where I belong. I, you know, I live in District 203, so I'm excited to see this project come to fruition. Hopefully, District, it'll come to District 203 as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Generally, we have our discussion or our public comment before an agenda item, right before that item. Since we changed the agenda, I will give a choice to Ms. Ruffin, whether she wants to give her public comment now or before the agenda item.
[inaudible].
Great, thank you. So now then, we move to the consent agenda and superintendent report, and we always begin with the superintendent report.
Okay, I'm going to start. It was a great weekend for District 204 and Team IPEF. We had a total of 908 registered runners between the kids marathon and the half marathon and 5K. Saturday was the kids marathon. We had 353 students from District 204 signed up to run for Team IPEF, and unlike last year where the wind was blowing sideways with snow, we had a beautiful, we had beautiful weather for both events. So, a special thanks to so many of our elementary and middle school mascots who showed up. They're very popular. They showed up to cheer on our students and participate in the mascot run, and a shout out to Nequa Valley for hosting this year's kids marathon for the first time. So, we lucked out on the weather again on Sunday. We had 555 Team IPEF runners. IPEF was once again the largest charity in the race, and there were bright yellow IPEF shirts everywhere you looked. So, thanks also to the school spirit squads who cheered on the half marathon, they were on the half marathon course enthusiastically cheering on all of our IPEF runners. And my thanks to every board member. So, I think we have a picture. Clayton, do you have a picture for us? Uh-oh, someone has to do it from there.
It's okay.
My thanks, oh no, we have to see your hat.
Oh, boy.
So, I'll go on. My thanks to every board member who may show up behind me, and our board secretary who either ran the 5K, a couple of people didn't run it, and the rest of us walked the 5K. And you know, I want you to know that it was noticed, I was at one of our schools this morning for a faculty meeting, and I had teachers who talked about the fact that they saw all of you, all the school board members at the race, and that was, that very much made an impression on them. So, and then finally, a huge shout-out. Now, she was just sitting over there, and I don't know where she went. Okay, there she is, right there. Huge thank you to Alicia Johnson, our Executive Director of IPEF, and Cindy Cozy, our Director of Development, and the IPEF Board of Directors, and I see our Executive Director, Rana, right over there, for all of the work to make this past weekend such a success. So, at the post-race party, we had a post-race party at Empire, so thanks to Empire for that. We are, our fundraising goal, we were just below our goal of $204,000, and so, I did, by about maybe $700, right, Alicia? So, I did mention that we could not have our fundraising goal start with the letters 203 or the numbers 203. That just didn't seem right. And so, fortunately, one of our sponsors, Charles Rutenberg Realty, stepped up to the mic and offered up the final $700 so that we could say that we raised $204,000. So, we're just above that. So, that's amazing. So, that topped, that topped last year, and so now, this is the largest fundraising campaign for Team IPEF. So, mark your calendars for October 18th, 2020, for year number seven, when IPEF hopes to cross that million-dollar mark in terms of dollars that they've raised through Team IPEF, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
We now move to our consent agenda items, and I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through F as presented.
I motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through F as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Motion passes. Since I was not in attendance at the regular Board of Education meeting on October 7th, I ask that that consent agenda item be considered for separate consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 7, 2019, and executive session on October 7, 2019?
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular meeting on October 7, 2019, and an executive session on October 7, 2019, as presented.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Abstain. Motion passes. Six yeas, one abstention. Action items, the approval of proposed new high school courses for 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those courses?
I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed new high school courses for 2020, 2021. Business Certification, Cyber Security, Music Production 1 and 2, Bodini, ASI Language 4, PLT-W Aerospace, Athletic Training, as presented.
Second. Motion and a second.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Mike Purcell, Brian Jovanini, and Grant Sarr, and all three of our high schools. At our last board meeting, we were able to present the courses and the reasons behind the proposals for these courses. All three of our high schools have agreed that these would be good to bring forward for our students for the 2021 school year. We'd like to ask your approval tonight. If these are approved, then we would begin working on the curriculum as well as curating resources and bring that back to the board later this spring. With that being said, did you have any questions for me?
Comments? None. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven zero. Now move to our discussion, and we're going to discuss the 2019 school report cards.
I will mention that the person who's supposed to be up here doing this presentation is home very ill. So, Charles is not here this evening, so Kathy is filling in, but any other questions that might be more in-depth, we will look to bring Charles back at another meeting, hopefully, when he's feeling better. So, thank you to Kathy for punting for us. The reason we wanted to continue to do this tonight is that the state will release this data October 30th, and so we wanted you to see it before it gets released publicly.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Dr. Lewis Lee, and we, as Dr. Sullivan said, standing in for Charles Sprandle, who really did all the work on all of the data and made all the charts and graphs, so we're just going to, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the analysis of those graphs, and then we can, Dr. Lee is going to talk a little bit more about that, and then about what we do with this data. We're happy to be here tonight. Our purpose is to provide you with an overview of the school report card, highlighting some possible, some changes to this year and then some possible changes in the future, present the district and school report cards to you, as well as an overview of District Goal 1, and then describe how our buildings use the data and the Illinois Quality Framework for school improvement planning. This does connect with board policies 220, 615, and 6340. So, before, the ESSA accountability was based only on the percentage of students that scored in Levels 4 and 5. That previously was meets and exceeds. Even though the state uses many additional criteria now, these measures play a visually prominent place on the school report cards. It's important to remember that even though the state uses the term proficient, the term proficient, this level of achievement would more accurate accurately be described as thorough mastery of the standards. I believe last year, when we talked to you about these scores, we shared with you that many states use a 3, 4, and 5 as the proficient level. However, Illinois has chosen to use only the 4 and 5 as proficient. So, many of our students would be proficient in other states with the same scores that they have now. Previously, this was the only score that was used to make designations for schools. Now, it's one of many in the criteria, and it's worth 15%. So, looking at these, this is our middle school in both English Language Arts and Math, and the same facts hold true for these as well. So, some changes from last year. Proficiency results from the Illinois Science Assessment are now included. We did not have those last year about this time. The results, so they did not include them, but this year, we are ready to go with the Illinois State Assessment results. Student participation rates for the Five Essentials Survey are now included. Just a reminder that that Five Essentials Survey goes to our 4th graders through 12th graders, and it really is just looking at, did they take it? Not the results themselves. And students are reported by homeschool rather than serving schools. So, previously, the student, whatever school the student attended for, during the school day, that was the school that received the scores. Now, it is the school in which the student lives within those attendance boundaries. So, for instance, a student who may live in, at Graham School, in those attendance boundaries, but maybe attended a class at Patterson for a self-contained class or some other coursework. Previously, they would have, the scores would have been reported to Patterson. Now, they go back to the homeschool, which is Graham. IEP student group has been replaced with a Children with Disabilities group. This group includes not only students with an IEP, but also students with a 504 plan. And the points for a High School, College, and Career Readiness Indicator have been distributed to the other indicators until that can become effective in the 2021 school year. So, as you know, there are multiple measures. We've talked about this previously, and you can see the percentages. We want to highlight here that 75% of the indicators are academic, with 25% of them being school quality and student success. The emphasis on these designations and, or these measures is growth. So, if you look at, there's, looking at the chart, there's 25% for ELA growth and 25% for math growth. Remember, when we looked at the first scores, we talked about just the proficiency level. Now, this, these indicators focus on the growth of the student, not just at their achievement. The same holds true if you look at high school. However, the biggest portion for this is the graduation rate, which is 50%. New school designations. So, how do our designations determine? This shows a summary of the process. Step one is the raw data for each indicator is translated into a score from 0 to 100. Each indicator has its own method for translation. Step two is the weights from the pie charts on the previous slides are then used to calculate a weighted score and then added together to calculate the school's overall score. You can see that I'm reading this from Charles because this is kind of a complicated process, and I want to make sure I get it right. Step three is finally, the overall scores from all schools are ranked to find the cut scores, which determine the final designation. We're gonna use some sample data and kind of walk through this process so we can get a better understanding of how this works. So, this is some sample data. If you look at the individual indicators and how they work together to produce an overall index score. So, this school had an ELA proficiency rate of, that earned 84 points. When the 7.5% weighting is then taken into account, it contributes 6.3 points toward the total. Likewise, for all of the rest of the indicators, and then together, the overall score is an 82.7. This 82.7, and this is taken into consideration, but then the same process is done for all of the subgroups that are listed above. So, each one of them create their own, get their own score. In the final step of the process, all the schools in the state are sorted from the highest to the lowest ranking. The top 10% are identified, and the score for the school at the bottom of the, of this group sets the cut score for an exemplary rating. So, the top 10%, so it's basically just a, a number of schools. They're ranked from the highest to the lowest with their index scores. And then, the bottom score of the, the, the score of the school with the, at the bottom of that 10% is then used as the exemplary cut score. The same thing holds true on the other end. The bottom 5% of schools are ranked. The top score, or the score for the top of the 5% is then used as the cut score for the other schools. This is one of the weakest points of this system. There's not a set score that can be identified as exemplary, as it changes every year based on how the school scores change every year. So, if one school comes out of exemplary, another pops in. So, it's difficult to predict where our schools are going to fall and what their designations are going to be, because we don't know the scores of all the other schools across the state. Any questions about that?
It's all relative.
It's all relative.
Kathy, just real quick.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a different? I don't know how to say this in a fair way, but is, we know historically, children's with disabilities or IEPs typically aren't gonna possibly perform as well. I mean, that's what the data shows. But, those are weighed, those are weighed all equally, all student groups that they say we have to measure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Before we go on, and we're asking questions, the index scores are an improvement to a degree, though. It's multiple measures versus one score.
Absolutely.
So, absenteeism, growth, that's much better than getting just a number.
Right, right. The weakness comes in the designations as far as the, the rankings and then being able to, looking at the top 10% and the bottom 5%. It's difficult to know what that cut score is going to be, and that's where the weakness comes in, in predicting what your designation will be.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. So, that's why I kind of have a problem with this, because if our students with disabilities are performing well, which historically, in all districts, that's, the same could be said, to me, it almost opens up the door for districts to try to, for lack of a better saying, work the system, essentially. So, is it, is it easier to outsource those students or outplace those students? And, and to make your score look better? And that's where I really have a problem with this, because it's not doing what's best for the students to try to make your, I'm not saying we would ever do that as a district, but I could see districts, you know, who, I don't know, it's, I like to think all, think all districts are doing the best they can for all students, but this, you know, this just rubs me the wrong way.
So, Mark, from my perspective?
I'm sorry, it's just.
I know, but I, given, I'm gonna just put my 38 years of education in this.
Yeah.
A, you have to be sure, I know this, what this school district's doing.
You know what I'm saying, though, right?
No, I understand it completely, but if you're basing your success, and the community is basing their success on one test score, there's a problem, and you're in trouble. So, if, if there is this theoretical district that is playing the game, they're doing a disservice to their students, they're doing a disservice to their community. And so, you know, we need to, this is a very important presentation, but we also have to put in perspective that educational excellence is much more than this presentation and this one set of scores. So, just a different perspective.
Excellent.
So, each school then receives a designation based on the calculations from before. The definitions for those designations are listed above. It's important to note that the scores for individual student groups play an important role here, as any student group has an overall score below the cut score of the lowest performing category, they will be given a designation of underperforming for that school. So, he highlighted the bottom 5%. So, if we have any of those, any of our groups that fall into that red level that he has, they're, the school automatically be designated as underperforming. So, here are the tentative results for District 204. T tentative because everything isn't released until October 30th. These do become official then, and may still change between now and the 30th. Last year, the district had six schools that were placed in exemplary category, and that has increased to 11 using these tentative results. So, there's some possible changes. They're in review right now. These have been submitted to the State Board for their consideration, but there's still discussion about them. In fact, we've been asked to give some feedback on those. Some of these changes will alter the method used to calculate our school's overall score, and this would reshuffle the order of schools in the state and cause designations to change, even if the underlying levels of achievement do not. We see this periodically when sources like Newsweek or US News change their procedures, and it causes schools to move up or down in their rankings. So, it's dependent upon those, some of those procedures. So, these changes that are proposed are add growth as an indicator at the high school level, to remove chronic absenteeism as an indicator. Currently, that's 20% overall, and change the name and number of summative designation categories. So, currently, there are four designation categories. They would move to five, and those, the proposal is that they would range from well-rounded, successful school to developing strength school. So, just something.
Don't, don't, don't memorize what's on here from, from this year, because it could change.
Exactly, exactly. And it's important to note that the state superintendent is also planning to undergo an evaluation of all of our state assessments and their systems.
Can I ask why the remove chronic absenteeism is, why, do you know, you have any idea?
What I heard was that, that the issue is, it's not a lot that the schools have control over, the issue of whether or not, you know, kids are coming to school, and that, that was one of the main complaints about that indicator.
So, there, because that's what I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask, actually, what were the, you know, what, what were they looking at trying to do to address that? But, they're just looking at removing it.
That's what, that's what I've heard. So, that's what's been proposed.
Okay. On the growth, on the, on the growth as an indicator at the high school level, how, how do they, how's that?
Because of the assessment system, they're now giving, they used to just, we used to just give one ACT at one point in time, but now we're giving multiple measures, so they would have an opportunity to have that growth score.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to shift gears and move to our district goals. The first one is to help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically. And the measures are listed below that. By the end of the ninth, of the 2019, 2020 school year, average Ames Web student growth percentile in reading and math will be greater than the 60th percentile. District-wide average SAT score will be a composite of 1180. The percentage of seniors with a post-secondary experience will be at least 92%, and the percentage of students receiving out-of-school suspensions will be at or below 1%. So, the first goal we look at is the, one that relates to our Ames Web growth. Ames Web is an assessment that we use at the elementary and middle school levels, K through 8, to monitor achievement and growth of our students in reading and math. While our growth percentiles were below our goal of 60 last year, they were still well above the national average of 50. This is important, because it means students in District 204 are growing faster than their national peers. Works kind of like your speed on the highway. If I'm driving 50 and you're driving 58, you'll get there farther and farther ahead as time passes. So, if you think about that in terms of growth, if our students continue to grow faster than other students across the nation, they'll get farther and farther, and their achievement will increase over time.
So, I want to be clear about this. The Board meets with the administration yearly and has a discussion about goals.
Mm-hmm.
60 is a bit of a stretch goal.
Yes.
Reasonably 50 would be a good target, and we would exceed. But I think in our discussions, we wanted to have, to push ourselves and to continue to strive to do better, so that's why we use 60 as the number.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Did, do we, on the, on the growth percentile, do we break, do we break that down? I just, on this particular one, I can't remember. Do we break that down gender, racially, on that growth percentile one as well?
We did it for the district goal, but there are opportunities to do that within the Ames Web system.
Just to, I'm just mentioning it just as a potential, I, I know we have overall district goals, and just looking at some of those areas where we may not be where we want to be, if we, you know, want to potentially look at how we can set some potential benchmarks to, to kind of.
And we do look at it in, you know, curriculum-wise, looking at it from grade to grade, to see where the most growth occurs, to see where it doesn't, those types of things as well. So, we do break it apart as we look at it to make some decisions across the board. So, then, this is how growth then translates into achievement. So, the scores you were looking at before are how an individual student's growth compares to other students' growth at the same grade level. What you're looking at now is that the graphs show how the achievement level of our current 5th graders has changed relative to their national peers since 2nd grade. So, that first graph is for reading. It's the same group of students that took the same assessment in 2nd grade that took it in 5th grade. This is a cohort, and we can see that the 2nd grade, the average score for this group was better than 60% of students across the country. By the time they started 5th grade, the average score for this group was better than 73% of their national peers. The second graph shows a similar trend in math. So, when you look at what we talked about before, if a student is growing faster, if our students are growing faster than students across the nation, then this is how it translates into their achievement and the growth in their achievement. And this is the same thing which holds true for our middle schoolers as they move from 5th grade into 8th grade, too. You can see similar results. This is the growth rate for our park and our Illinois Assessment of Readiness. We see similar growth percentiles in these areas. These are measures that are used in the Summit of Designation calculations from earlier. So, when you look at that ELA growth and the math growth, these are the calculations that are used there.
I'm gonna transition into sharing some data and perspective regarding our remaining district goals. We know that the SAT is the State About Accountability Assessment for all high schools in the state of Illinois, and it comes from the College Board. This assessment is given to all juniors on the same day in, in the state of Illinois. And this assessment really has two big sections, the evidence-based reading and writing section, and then the math section. And what you're seeing on this graph actually shows what the composite score is from those two sections. First, for our district at 1148, and then a comparison to what that composite score is for the entire state of Illinois at 995. Those composite scores come from adding, again, the scaled score from the evidence-based reading and writing and the math. from the evidence-based reading and writing and the math, which have a range of two hundred to eight hundred, which ultimately can provide you with the composite score that we have, not just for the district and for the state. When students are actually taking the test, there's actually three sections that they're going through. They're going through a reading section, a writing and language section, and a math section. And part of the College Board SAT is a SAT suite of assessments that we're using to look at growth and that includes everything from the PSAT eight-nine, the PSAT ten, the PSAT NMSQT, which is the exact same test as the PSAT-ten, just allows for juniors in their, during the fall to qualify for the National Merit Scholarship monies and then, and then finally the SAT in the spring of their junior year. When we're looking at those sections, the reading section primarily looks at reading comprehension. It's looking at vocabulary, contextual vocabulary. The math section is really focusing not just on problem solving, but it's actually looking at math that students would be using throughout their future careers, their jobs, their personal lives. And then the, the writing and language really focuses on a command of evidence. Are students able to really look at that evidence and go through it? So when we look at the average junior year SAT total scores, this slide shows the results for last year's juniors and it's broken out, as you can see, by several demographic groups. Now, the College Board has set college readiness benchmark scores for both portions of the tests that do come to a total composite score of ten-twenty. We know from looking at this slide that there remains a significant gap in achievement if we were looking at one indicator as measured by the College Board benchmark. We, as a district, do remain committed to reducing that gap for not just our students in one standardized test, but in all areas of, that we use to measure achievement. This result also shows that our works and efforts toward reducing the gap at earlier ages is especially important. We're also encouraged by data that we'll talk about later that also shows that, as measured by college persistence rates, shows that our students are doing well and is a critical piece to review, remains high for students despite the level of SAT score that they might receive. The College Board even goes on to acknowledge that college readiness is a continuum and students can still be successful in college if they fall below their identified benchmark. Our own data for students who are ultimately accepted into and successful in college does support this as well. These are, though, important indicators for students who may need additional academic support. We know, has been said already by Mr. Razak and other members of our board that our students are more than a test score. But, and we use multiple metrics to really show how indicators for college and work readiness go hand in hand. Standardized test scores, though, are traditionally used as a primary readiness indicator, but they do not always provide an accurate representation of our students' potential. When you look again at this slide, it does show that for our students, the, the average composite score of eleven forty-eight and then what that averages for the entire state of Illinois coming in at nine ninety-five. So one way to increase students' readiness for life after high school is to give them opportunities to experience college-level coursework while they're actually still in high school. And the district has set a goal by the board that recognizes this important belief. By the senior year, the district goal is that at least ninety-two percent of all of our students have had that experience. We know dual credit and AP offerings at the high school level allow our students to engage in college-level rigor in a supportive environment with the assistance of their high school teacher. Now, our dual credit offerings continue to increase, as you can see in this slide, as measured from the cohort class of two thousand eighteen and the class of two thousand nineteen. And this is just not by mistake. It's really been the result of a lot of behind-the-scenes work from our Curriculum and Destruction Department. Kathy and her team continue to work with post-secondary institutions like the College of DuPage to provide access and increased opportunity to make college course credits a reality for all of our students while they're still in high school. We know the larger amount of dual credit offerings that are provided to our students not only result in a monetary savings for our parents, but our students get to get a head start in their coursework, their major, and if they progress on into work or career right after high school. Our continued work also with equal-opportunity schools has resulted in a seventy-five percent increase in our underrepresented students successfully completing an AP dual-credit course offering. This is one of the reasons the College Board also recognizes the work of VOS and is a corporate partner with them in helping students engage with college-level rigor before they leave high school. This slide measures and tracks the percentage that I'll tell in the next one of graduating seniors that have had at least one of these post-secondary experiences at some point in our high school career. Again, it's relative to the goal. We know that for the class of two thousand nineteen, ninety-two point two percent of all students did have that experience in an AP or a dual-credit course offering, with some of that biggest increase again in the dual, dual, dual-credit category.
I, I love seeing this because it does emphasize what you said earlier, Dr. Lee, about, you know, measurement is many factors and, you know, so often we focus purely on a test score and where, where we have struggling students or whatever. But getting ninety-two point two percent of our students through an AP or dual-credit class successfully, because this isn't just taking it. We've had great success in students taking the AP test and having a three or higher. So it's congratulations all around and an important way to also look at what defines success for our students.
Just a quick question on the successfully side. Do, do, does that equate to a particular grade or either the AP testing? What, can you just share what that?
Yeah, great question. I know, you know, if we were looking, for instance, at the AP exam, we know that the majority of our students do sit for the AP exam and do take that exam who are enrolled in a course offering. We know that students who first are enrolled in that course, research shows that their efforts at completing that college degree are increased by ten to twenty percent and it increases even more above twenty percent if they actually do take that AP exam. And, and again, whether it's getting that three or higher, we consistently see the majority of our students fall into that category. We know, we also know that some of our students may choose not to sit for that and that could be for a variety of reasons, looking at, you know, if I'm going to a certain college and knowing that they may not accept, you know, that particular coursework, it may not be prudent for them, but there are many reasons why they may not take that. And then the same thing with our dual-credit offerings. Obtaining that grade equate, equates to real credits that they can utilize in general ed requirements or, you know, towards future work or career that they're gonna go into. This slide right here shows the breakdown by demographic group when looking at that same data set and just breaking it apart by our underrepresented groups across by race. So you continue to see here our underrepresented groups trending in a positive direction. Again, this is the same cohort class of two thousand eighteen and then looking at that by race, the same class of, different class of two thousand nineteen. And what you're seeing here is not only this going in a positive direction, but we actually see some of that achievement gap start to narrow in this metric of college readiness. And again, just looking at multiple metrics continues to show us and paint a big picture of, of different pieces in the puzzle to where our students are at and where they're going to. The biggest gains that you can see in this slide are show, in our low-income, our African-Americans, and also our special ed students. So what happens after graduation? This is really the ultimate measure that we want to see not only our students move into, but we want to know how successful are they in their chosen field? First, I'm gonna walk us through college enrollment rates and, and talk a little bit about the changing landscape of college and what that means. We know that while graduation rates from our district high schools are important, what our students ultimately do in that post-secondary environment continues to be the ultimate measure of their true success. We want all of our students to achieve their greatest potential no matter what path they ultimately choose to take. For some, we know this may be directly into a career work environment. The military, they may choose service. Or as this slide shows, enrollment in a two- or four-year public or private college/university. Currently in our district, the majority of our students do enroll in college directly after graduation. We are seeing more students taking a non-traditional route, though, to college by enrolling first in a community college as college costs continue to rise. Employers are also looking for students' skill sets that may not be only developed from obtaining a traditional four-year degree, but from a pathway that's leading to actual job certification. And I think we heard a little bit from public comment by the gentleman today to talk about what pathways and how that leads directly to future skills that employers are looking for. By taking a dual-credit or AP course, while in high school, we are seeing many students and their families recognize this as an important path for whatever their future career work takes them. These types of courses, we know, challenge and provide skill sets that are important for future work, whether through older siblings, friends, or future employers. Students are also seeing opportunities for transferring to a four-year college after successful completion of course offerings. Employers may choose to help pay college costs, we know, in many instances, and parents with the ability to save on those college courses with courses, again, that we talked about are offered in high school. Our data showing that, we showed earlier that ninety-two percent of our students taking a course, a dual-credit or AP course, actually displays that our students are ready for college and is a stark rebuke to maybe what a lower score that is received on the SAT, if that's used as the only indicator of what their future potential and success might be. Might point out, this is also a direct contrast to what the state says on our high school report card. For example, they'll say that our district has a proficiency level of only sixty-three percent, while yet, as we look at this, this slide shows college enrollment rates that were averaging eighty-five percent if we look at the past three cohorts' class. And that falls well above of what the national average is of just under seventy percent. This data comes to us directly from the National Student Clearinghouse and this organization tracks enrollment in the roughly four thousand public and private two and four-year universities that are in our country. Our most recent cohort data begins with the class of two thousand eighteen, which shows, again, that roughly eighty-five percent of our students are enrolling in college post-high school. So we know that the national graduation rate, beginning with the class of two thousand seventeen, we know nationally is about sixty percent and that's over six years. That rate actually falls to about thirty-three percent if you were to measure it in four years. One of the most powerful indicators of student success is the college persistence rate. And again, this comes from the National College Clearinghouse. This is another additional metric that we're using to measure and track how are our students being prepared and, and their ultimate success after they graduate from high school. So what is persistence? It's a measure of the number of students that, once they enroll in college, they actually persist on from their fall to their sophomore year in school. And this slide actually shows what our, as a district, what our national, what our persistence rate is. And you can see we've averaged between ninety-four and ninety-five percent of all of our students, that same data set that we showed earlier of eighty-five percent that are enrolling. We can say positively that ninety-five percent are choosing to continue on in their sophomore year of school.
So I had a discussion with Charles and a discussion with Ms. Peace. And I think it's important and it ties back to District 01, which includes social-emotional health. And you can comment on this or not. I'm going to comment. College participation is just like that PARC score. And maybe in the future, we're going to see the number of students going to college decreasing because it's not necessary anymore in two thousand nineteen-twenty to do what was done in nineteen seventy-four, which it was imperative to have a college degree to earn, to be socially, economically feasible. So this is a good measure. It's a great measure in terms of persistence, in terms of people who have chosen that path. But I would be, like, really careful. I, I check myself that this is not the only measure. I try to check parents to say this is not the only measure, that the way the economy is built now is much different than it was when I was going to college and almost had to go to college in order to be economically feasible. So I don't know if you have a comment on that or not.
I think that's why our Portrait of a Graduate competencies are so important, is because we're hearing the same things that you are. In fact, there are companies now that would rather have someone not have a four-year experience because they want to teach them in the manner in which they can use those skills within their company. So, you know, that work we did on the Portrait of a Graduate, there are a lot of, there was a lot of good information on landscape shifts and what the workforce will look like for our students and what will be needed. And so, you know, as we approve those competencies, we look to those to provide our students with what they will need to do whatever it is that they choose, whether that does require further schooling, whether it requires on-the-job training. And then, you know, when we look at our social-emotional learning pieces as well, those competencies are equally as important because the measure of success and happiness is not a PARC score, nor is a college education. There are many things that go into that. So I think the, the work that's been done in both of those areas is very important as we look ahead and looking for what the world will be like for our students as they move from District 204.
And briefly, I want to reinforce what you said because there's some students here. So I'm not saying it's not important to go to college. What you just said is it may take a different route.
It may look different.
That ongoing learning is going to be important in order to be economically feasible. The jobs are going to change much faster than they did when I was at college age. So continual education is going to be an important concept.
Absolutely. And when you look at coding, we have students that code, but coding changes and adapts based on what, what comes next. So what type of language you'll need and things like that. So when we look at the workforce in the next twenty years and you look at a gig economy and things like that, the flexibility and the adaptability of our students is gonna be very important because they'll be learning for a job. Instead of learning to receive a degree, they'll be in continuous learning based on what career they'd like, career pathway they'd like to choose next.
Yeah, let's just be clear again, Mike, that the Portrait of the Graduate, which we interviewed, talked to teachers, business owners, community members, students, those skills or competencies in the Portrait of the Graduate, along with, if the student so chooses to go to college or follow a trade or go their path, that is the best recipe for success.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I just don't-
Trying to send a bad message.
I was, I was thinking while you were talking, just about a discussion I had just the other night with the student that escorted me somewhere and I was talking to him and he, and he said he was a senior and I said, "What will you be doing next year?" And he said he will go to electrician school. So I want him to be viewed as a success, just like-
Absolutely.
So, I, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at, how we promote that more at the district, you know?
And I, thank you, Mike and Lori, for saying that because my, my question was going to be kind of tagged on mics, but, you know, as we go forward, how can we look at- But, you know, as we go forward, how can we look at representing that success factor just outside of that collegiate realm? Because it is extremely important for students that, to look at what that additional training looks like, as everyone said. So, college is extremely important for those that, that's the route to take. But, post-secondary training and education is going to be crucial, obviously, for anyone to continue to succeed, whatever that looks like. But, if we can, you know, continue to look at how do we represent that? And it's, I'm not saying it's easy, but how do we represent that success for those that don't determine that that four-year is, is their pathway?
I'm just happy we're measuring the persistence though, because we didn't always have this measure.
Yeah.
And this is three years of measure and we're already talking, well, now we need to measure something else. But, so, I'm, I'm happy that we're measuring this because a lot of our parents do want our kids college-ready. And this is a good indicator. Thank you.
And just a final piece of that persistence rate, this is just a comparison on the national level of what we look like nationally at fifty-two percent and where we're at, which is seventy-nine percent, just around eighty percent.
And when you think about the discussion that we just had, what the persistence shows is that our students are continuing to learn after they leave us. And that's the key to all of the conversation we've just had, is that, that number does show that they're continuing to learn. Whether it's in a university or in other areas, we need to start to measure what that continuous learning looks like.
The next district goal that was up there really dealt with our, our annual school behavior metric and how we're measuring that. We'll be sharing details for the, this current year at our future upcoming presentation that we normally have in late spring, early summer. So, now that we kind of have a lot of this data and, you know, we're able to use some of these metrics, the question obviously, well, what do we do with it? What happens? How do the schools take some of this and, and really try to make sure systemically that we're, we're doing what we can for our students? What we have used currently is the Illinois Quality Framework. And this is a document that, it has standards, it has indicators in there, some guiding questions for diverse stakeholder groups. And we're, we're using those in a, really an open and honest inquiry-based conversation. And then, these conversations really state, set the stage for the completion of the Illinois Quality Framework rubric. Now, this rubric, we actually, a year ago, took all of our principals and their ILT teams through the seven indicators that were there. And we allowed them, they actually got into, to collaborate with their individual ILT teams and to work through not only the indicators, but actually start to systemically list some of the things that are happening in their school sys, in their school buildings based upon the indicators that are listed. And then also areas for improvement that this framework ultimately gives us. Now, use of the framework, I would like to mention, is a requirement for when we were looking at those school designations that were listed earlier. So, those that are in that underperforming group, the state would require them to, to use that framework. And we actually use that because we know it's an important framework for not just looking at successes in your school, but ultimately challenges that are, are there, whether it be through different underrepresented groups and how they're measuring up. And it's just a really good tool for us to take a look, look at. And so, we really believe in that tool so much that we've, have worked this year to really change our school improvement plans to really align with this Illinois Quality Framework. So, there's four big steps that are listed in that framework for us to really take a look at that we pulled out and have made use in our SIP plans. And the first really causes the, the school to take a look at what is their current performance? How are they doing right now? What's the snapshot of where they're at and how that's going to be compared to what the state's goals are? And them determining their own school improvement long-term goals. Second step would be to take some of their findings and use the IBAM Needs Assessment. And the IBAM is just an acronym for the Illinois Balanced Accountability Measurement. It's a committee that was, you know, that's within ISB and was really formed and tasked to take a look at different recognition standards for student performance and school performance for all school districts and school improvement. The third piece of what we're doing with our SIPs are to identify any resource inequities. That may include budgeting to be addressed through the implementation of the school improvement plan. And then finally, listing some of those interventions, those activities that they're doing to address those different needs that are present in their school and how those are going to work to address some of the achievement gaps that may be present when they're looking across their student body. Ultimately, we want to be able to provide support for this process to all of our buildings. And that support comes in a variety of factors. Part of that comes through meetings and work through not only myself, but also the other assistant superintendents, Brad Hillman and Laura Divine-Johnston, to take a look and work with buildings and their leadership teams. Coaching is also offered, work with Charles's office. Charles, many occasions, has gone out to meet with ILTs, to work through the data, to show areas of improvement, to work, look at trends, to help in their understanding of different areas that, from some of the metrics that we've shared and how that can go to improving, go into their school improvement plan so that they can work on the improvements in there. And then again, looking at commonalities for needed changes that may need to occur in curriculum or instructional resources. And with that, we've, hopefully, Charles is watching and we've taken. He's probably sleeping, but, you know, we'll entertain any other questions that you may have, that we can definitely highlight.
Questions, comments?
Looking at, on Slide twenty-nine, you know, detailing strategies and interventions to address gaps in achievement and student equities. And then, when I go back to Slide twenty-one, I believe it is, I, you know, I love to see when we have goals and data-driven targets. So, anything that, as we're talking about strategies, to look at those, you know, groups where we're trying to make sure that we're focused on to at least even come up to the benchmark. Anything, and I, I think we've talked about this before, but anything on the specific data goal setting on that, that end might at least give us an idea of where we can begin to shoot for, for those particular areas where we do need to see, you know, improvement just to even make the benchmark level. So.
Absolutely.
Any consideration that we can give to that?
I think the Quality Framework is very helpful in that it helps a school to focus on a specific area instead of overall achievement. It really helps the guiding questions and the indicators that ILT discusses help them to hone in on an area in which they can make a difference. So, for instance, we went through this whole process with one of our middle schools last year. And when they looked at their data, they had a larger ELL population. And so, they looked at activities to focus. We purchased books in native language for students to read, to have literature in their native language. We did staff development within their school about general strategies. We provided time for the ELL teacher to consult with regular education teachers so that they could provide strategies within that system. So, they were able to take and look at a group that they saw a gap in inequity and really hone in. And with the support of administration, as well as some funding and some curriculum teams, we were able to concentrate on that and to really try to make a difference and focus on an area to help boost that student, those student, student growth as well as achievement in that area. So, that's an example of how this Quality Framework will help support some of the things that we've discussed before. And it's really based on evidence and research. So, the indicators are, show exactly how to have a high-quality school. So, it, it provides some of that footing for a school to know that these are the right things to talk about and the right things to dig into. And then, to be able to focus and provide some support in those areas in order to boost both student growth as well as achievement. So, this, we piloted it last year with a few schools. This is the first year that every school is using that Quality Framework and then developing a work plan.
Others?
Just, and just a final comment, I'm, I do appreciate earlier this year, latter part of last year, when we were looking from a budgetary standpoint and receiving some additional Title I and we were able to look at making sure that some of those resources could go to some of the Title I to help boost some of those levels. So, I appreciate the focus, you know, and just trying to, to help balance out where we see we need to.
So, I mean, if you translate that process in looking at Title I where they've been able to focus in, now with the, using the Quality Framework and the work plan, all schools are able to take a look at some of those indicators and then we can help support them in their focus as well.
I just, I'm going to say, I'm looking at the scores of growth and you're seeing consistency across assessments. And, and, and then including our persistence in graduate and, and college accomplishments. So, I mean, we've really got a very good picture of what's going on in this district and what is really pushing. And when we look at the Quality Framework, this is not something the state has told us to do. This is something we have chosen to do. So, I think there's a lot of applause here for the work that's being done in this district. I, I just, my only question was on Slide eleven and you talked about the rankings. And I, I guess, I'm, I'm just, you said, you kind of said it's a weakness because it's, you know, it's relative. Was there, is there an idea of a better way to do it, I guess?
That's a really good question. I think, you know, when we call it a weakness, I think it's more about, prior to that, we had a cut score. And you knew what your goal was and you knew what you were working towards and you wanted to get to that line. There is not a cut score. So, I think when you look at what, where are you trying to get to, you're trying to get to that top ten percent. Wouldn't it be great though, if everyone could be, have the, be at the top? And so, that's, I think, in my mind, that's the difficulty in this is because for us to be exemplary, somebody has to come out of there. And I, I think that's the difficulty in it. I don't know if it's a weakness, but I think it's the difficulty in that is that it's a transition for us to look at how we compare to everyone else and to look, you know, you never wish for another school to not be exemplary. We would love for everyone to have the opportunity to reach that, that top level, just as though we want all of our kids to exceed. So, you know, we do, I'll just speak for myself, I do like that there's multiple indicators. I think there's still some play in what those indicators will turn out to be and what's the best route you heard about. I mean, it makes sense for, if a student's at school, then they will learn better. So, you can see why chronic absenteeism was in there before. But, so, I, I just think it's, it's, it's on, it's getting there, in my mind, we're moving in the right direction. It's just not solid yet and it change, it, it will change again. And it will probably, you'll see many, many transitions as we move through this, just as we'll, you know, probably move from four designations to five, things like that.
Right, right. So, it creates winners and losers is what you're kind of saying. One other question, on Slide twenty-three, you, the, you broke down the different subgroups of students that are getting the dual-credit and AP classes. You said the low incre, low-income increase, but I thought, I was looking at it, is the Hispanic-Latino increased substantially and the low incomes wasn't as substantial it looked like of an increase? Am I wrong in that?
As I'm looking at this, it looks like, and again, we can double-check this, I would say you're exactly right about the Hispanic-Latino. I'm looking at it, that it has the low income, maybe just a bar below that. So, that's why it's, but we can double-check all of that.
I just wanted to see if I was reading it right. And then, and we, I know, as somebody who works with low-income, chronic absenteeism is a huge factor. So, I would be very surprised that they would pull that out.
We, we do obviously know that that low-income group has crossover into some of our underrepresented groups. We see a lot of commonalities between those, so.
Okay, thank you.
Others, Ms. Grover?
I wanted to ask about your Equal Opportunity Schools. How many students are in that?
Oh, are enrolled overall?
Yeah.
So, every, going off the top of my, great question right now. So, I would, I would have to get back to you to give you the exact answer. But, I would say that we are identifying, we, every school, their outreach list, usually it's between probably around two hundred students that they are, that EOS first gives us and says, "Hey, let's take a look at these students. They may potentially be ready for an AP course offering." What the school then does is sort of takes a secondary look at that. Because what that, what they're, what they use to identify those lists is not only, obviously, GPA and how students' performance is, but they're also going off of student surveys where they're accounting for levels of student grit, leadership potential, problem-solving skills. And sometimes, students may identify that they want to obviously take that AP course. We're looking at not just that as an indicator, but where do they fall in terms of GPA? Where do they, teachers and the staff know background information about that student? So, that gives them, that secondary look helps to, to sort of say, "Well, you know, and I know this student absolutely, you know, they, they're definitely ready for this." Or, you know what, there's some background info that wasn't measured in the survey that, you know, may not be a good fit for the, for this fall, but possibly for the spring." So, that list then just gives them a, a nice list at the end of the day. I think averaging, it would probably be around ninety to a hundred students per school that ultimately may end up taking that course, taking an AP course.
And then, because I was looking at the persistency, do we have data on students who are enrolled in EOS and whether they persist in college then? Do we have separate data?
EOS is really the, Equal Opportunity Schools is the organization. So, the enrollment is really in the course. So, the Equal Opportunity Schools provides us with a process for finding students who could benefit that we haven't been able to find before. So, we don't typically identify in a different manner. It's not its own entity, we don't identify a student as an Equal Opportunity Schools student. The Equal Opportunity Schools is the process that we use in order to help us to find students that we haven't found before.
I guess I was just trying to figure out if we are able to measure how we have helped them or whether they've gained like a, for an AP. I just, I was just wondering if there was a measurement on that.
I think the biggest measurement we've seen that we've, you know, can share is just, we've been able to see in those underrepresented groups, I think just that seventy-five percent increase in terms of those students now taking an AP dual-course offering. But, I think as Kathy shared, we're not able to simultaneously track those, pull them out and say, "You're an identified EOS student." Because ultimately, once we get them identified, they are in that classroom and.
Right, which I understand, right.
We don't see any difference between them and scoring ability, grade-wise, or how they ultimately come out.
Our College Clearinghouse data does, is not by student identified. So, we can't even, we can't figure out who those are individually. So, they won't, they don't give us that data that way.
Okay. My next question comment is on Slide seven. You know, we were talking about the skills that we, with Portrait of a Graduate and skills that we want the high schoolers to have. And so, when I saw the graduation rate of fifty percent, I was kind of taken aback by that because it just seems that's what seems to be the most important rather than the skills that we're teaching them or any comment?
Yeah, that fifty percent is the portion of, the weight of what graduation does for the indicator. So, the, it is very important. And I think if you, if you look at it, it is making it half as important as all those other things put together. So, if you combine all those other things and combine them together, graduation rate is equally as important as all those things put together. So, they are saying that graduating from high school is very important. When we look at our. When we look at our portrait of a graduate, those competencies are things that you use in order to persevere and to get to graduation. So, we're not looking at them as separate entities. We're looking at them as competencies in order to persevere, to work through your courses, to adapt to what's needed, to make good decisions, and to be, to be able to graduate. Thank you.
Mr. Rising, you have a question?
Just two brief comments. Slide 10, again, sorry. You know, this was somewhat surprising because, you know, I know we have a significant achievement gap we need to address and continuously always address and work towards it, but I was surprised. Oh, this is sample data. Okay, never mind then. Okay, forget that then. Slide, okay, thank you, Kathy. Slide 21 then. You know, I know this is just a sample set of data and looking at juniors and SAT scores. But, you know, I, I think, yes. I, I, I will be interested to see our comparable data, how we compare in these areas that we're looking at. You know, to me, this is a clear indicator of where we need to do work at. I'm, I'm also, to what Kathy said, I, I'm a firm believer that low income in, in majority of the cases is the biggest hurdle that we have to overcome, is low income to help those students the most. Because I don't like to stereotype any of the other groups, because I think you have students that perform very well and students that don't perform as well. But, I think low income, we've, the data has shown that that's the biggest impact on student performance. So, I'll just look forward to the future comparable data. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Anyone else?
So, we did mention that that 60 percent growth percentile was a, a stretch ambitious goal for our districts. We came a little short, but also that was true for the SAT also, where our stretch goal was 1180, and so, we were a bit short. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that also was a stretch goal for us, right?
Others? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for filling in. You guys did a great job. We now move to another discussion item, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards' resolution and position statements. We do have public comment on, on this item. Leslie Ruffing, you can please come up. Just a reminder, you're limited to three minutes. And again, public comment represents the voice and the opinion of speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Ruffing, and I live in South Naperville. Both of my daughters are currently enrolled in a District 204 school at Patterson Elementary. I'm here as a parent, community member, and, excuse me, volunteer group leader with Moms in Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm here tonight to speak out against arming teachers at school. Like everyone else, I am horrified by school shootings and know that guns do not belong in our schools. The presence of guns at school adds an unpredictable element that puts educators and students at increased risk and layers even more safety concerns on top of the heavy responsibilities already placed on teachers. Although I understand the frustration and emotions that would lead someone to think arming teachers would be a good idea, it is critical that we let data drive this decision. There is no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. Both the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers, the two largest teacher organizations in the country oppose allowing guns in schools. As the president of the National Education Association said, the idea of arming teachers is ill-conceived, preposterous, and dangerous. Arming teachers and other school personnel does nothing to prevent gun violence. In fact, quite the contrary, educators would feel less safe if school personnel were armed. More guns does not equal safer schools. Rather than arming teachers, we must focus instead on prevention. It's a longer-term goal with fewer quick answers, but it will also provide the best results for stay, staff and student safety while fostering a healthy learning environment. As a district and community, we need to ensure that students do not have unsupervised access to firearms, and we can do this. We know that in 78, 78 percent of targeted school shootings, the weapon used came from the shooter's home or the home of a relative. As a district, we can work to educate parents and caregivers to safely secure firearms. This means they should be kept locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. Other school districts have done this by sending letters to families at the start of the school year that explain safe firearm storage and outline applicable storage laws. I think it's also important to consider how arming teachers could disproportionately affect students of color in a negative way. Black, Latino, and Native American students are all disciplined at disproportionate rates. In fact, the suspension rate for Black and Latino students doubled between 1972 and 2010. Students of color also experience racial bias at school, which suggests that arming teachers could make an already difficult environment much more dangerous for those students in particular. In conclusion, I am asking you and your IASB delegate to oppose resolution number one. In regards to the other school safety resolutions, I would hope that you would use your position as a leading district to work towards policies that emphasize violence prevention, rather than further hardening our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And so, now we begin the process of, of discussion. And I want to make it clear that this school board does follow process. We receive the resolutions. Probably had a brief conversation on October 7th, but we always try to schedule this in order that discussion can be held and that our representative is Mr. Rising, and that if we need to get further information, this gives us an opportunity to do so. And then, the board does take a stand on the positions and will take a stand at the next meeting. I called Mr. Rising today, just so he could assist to making sure the public understands the process and what the resolutions are about, and then we'll go about the business of discuss, discussing the resolutions.
Yep, thanks, Mike. And just to reiterate one point that you said tonight we'll use for discussion, further questions that you want me to look at, but by all means, feel free to say whatever you want. This is, you know, but we'll take the final vote on these resolutions on November 4th. Just to kind of go through some of the process, just for the public's knowledge on this, is that every year, school, just, school boards across the state can submit new resolutions or amended existing positions that the Illinois Association of School Board has or reaffirming of existing positions that, that is representative of all Illinois Association school boards. When those resolutions are submitted, they are submitted to a governing body, if you will, that's made up of 21 districts across the state. For instance, we are in the DuPage District. So, there is a delegate, or, I'm sorry, a re, resolution rep that sits on that. He currently is, serves at Salt Creek School District. And he takes, you know, I guess is representative of us and has a vote, along with those other, altogether 21 districts. And they look at the resolutions, they determine if it's already similar to one that exists, or if this one should be brought forward to all the Illinois Association of School Boards. At that, at that point, the resolution committee takes a position. And that's either to do adopt their recommendation, actually, it is either to do adopt or do not adopt. And that is why it's important to read the exact resolution and what the position of the resolution committee is. And then, that's what we vote on, is to, if we support or oppose the position of the resolution committee. Now, once that's all determined by us, we go down to Springfield during our conference in November. And I believe it's November 24th, the Saturday, is the delegate assembly. And at that point, every school board across the state is supposed to send one representative to vote according to their board's wishes as it relates to these resolutions. Once those pass, obviously, if they fail, that they're not part of the positions of the Illinois Association of School Boards. But, if they pass, what happens is that resolution then becomes a current position of the Illinois Association of School Boards. Then, when legislation is discussed at the state level, a state legislator might go and/or our attorneys for the Illinois, Illinois Association of School Boards might go to our attorneys, and they will ask the governing body of the Illinois Association of School Boards, what is the position of all the school boards across the state on this particular issue, whatever that might be. So, this, as these positions or as these resolutions become a position, that is just a guiding principle for our attorneys for either advocacy or lobbying or as legislators want to know the position of the school boards. Did that all make sense? Okay. So, in that, this year, there are 18 things that we need to consider. 12 are new resolutions. There's five that amended existing positions and one that's reaffirming of an existing position. As you know, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, I wanted board members to send me their questions, which they did, and there was questions. And after communicating individually, as I did with the board members, there are certain resolutions that it is my belief that we need to discuss individually tonight. And I'll just briefly mention those. So, it's resolution one, resolution three, resolution four, resolution seven, eight, and 10. If anybody else wants to discuss a resolution individually, I guess, let me know. And just to back up a little on the process that goes on with the resolutions, you know, every board is supposed to vote on these. And when the board, as we read these resolutions, at the very end of this booklet, are what's called current IASB belief statements. These are kind of our guiding principles of how we're supposed to determine how appropriate these resolutions are and, and representative of the, the, these resolutions. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention too, because I think it's important, because we always talk about our guiding principles as board members. These are kind of the guiding principles as it relates to the resolutions. So, did anybody have any other resolutions they wanted to individually discuss? Otherwise, I'll get into the ones that I mentioned. Let's begin. Okay. Well, I'm just going to open it up for discussion. So, the first one, first resolution, as we all know and have read, it's similar to a resolution that was brought forward before the delegate assembly last year. This year, it is titled Student Safety. And submitted by Mercer County, which is a downstate district. And it basically says it's resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support the advocacy of legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans, which allows voluntary district employees in any capacity the ability to carry a concealed firearm on district property, provided that employee has a valid FOID card, holds a certificate of Illinois Concealed Carry License, has completed all the additional trainings that certification set by, by the respective school board, one of which must include yearly cert, certified active shooter training. Only district employees who fulfill all the requirements listed and receive superintendent and board approval would be eligible as an active and armed part of the student safety and protection plan. Go.
I think we should oppose.
Thank you, thank you, Justin, for your position. If we wanted to have questions or discussion, you know, we can do that too.
Ms. Grover?
I just wanted to say, you know how we decided the joint board review, what we were going to decide, and we looked at our mission, our resolution that we had put out? I like the fact that Mark brought up the belief statement, and I wanted to point out to one of the beliefs that was, schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students. And I don't think bringing guns in will give a safe and secure environment for all students.
Can I, I know you're enthusiastic, but can I ask the audience to respect the discussion?
And then, I was looking at another belief statement where it says, the Illinois Association of School Boards believes in the vigorous support and the rigid enforcement of the laws pertaining to the sale, possession, and use of firearms. And I just think that kind of is in contrast with their resolution that any school personnel can carry a firearm. So, I would oppose.
I'd like to hear from Kathy Peale about our position statement.
I'm so happy that you brought up the belief statement. So, and I did turn to your belief statements when we were going to discuss this. And I was looking for my belief statement that we submitted, and it was adopted by the delegate assembly last year.
Remind us what that was, Kathy.
And that was belief statement number 16, which is not in our booklet. So, there was an error when they put the delegate resolutions committee report together.
Which got sent out to all the school boards across the state.
Which is kind of funny that Ms. Grover went to the belief statements and couldn't quote our own resolution because it wasn't there. So, so I'm loving this. Because our statement was that the Illinois Association of School Boards believes that schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students and staff. Decisions of school safety drills, plans, and procedures should be made at the local level utilizing evidence-based practices that maximize resources and effectiveness and by soliciting input from local emergency responders, resulting in fewer physical, emotional, and psychological risks to students and staff. So, that was a process to put that together. It took a lot of input from other people, including the IASB staff. And it was very purposeful that I was suggesting evidence-based practices be used when we're keeping our kids safe. And I think one of our public, our public comment mentioned that that was a very important piece to keep in mind, and that having guns in schools is not an evidence-based practice. So, yes. I'm very strongly opposed to this, and I am disappointed that our belief statement was not included in the packet because I think Ms. Grover is not going to be the only board member who turns to belief statements to make that judgment.
Other comments? My only one, I was kind of shocked to see it reappear. It's clear what my position was last year. I don't think I will be moved off that position.
Right, I also was shocked, and so, and I, last year, if you recall, I wrote a very passionate statement about my opposition to this. I went through it and tried to see how is this different. And it still advocates for, not only supporting this, but advocates, but it took away presenting the resolution to Illinois General Assembly, which was good, but But it also somewhat broadened the words around who could have firearms. It also was a little bit more specific about requirements for firearms. But when you go and look at what those requirements are, I could get those tomorrow myself and probably any teacher that is in this building could also. They also, you know, continue to focus on local control and response time. And I'm very sympathetic to that, but I think that you have to look at what is based on facts and evidence of what works in schools and what doesn't. And this time, they talk about not only financial issues, but that they don't have any people that can do these jobs, which was kind of surprising. So, you know, I was worried because I looked to see last year, eleven districts submitted this. And this year, just one, and the one that submitted isn't one of the eleven. So, this barely got turned down last year, so I'm concerned that there's going to be overwhelming support coming in from all of these districts to support this, but not, not at all. Nothing has changed my mind from last year.
Ms. Dunning.
I was very, very passionate regard, last year regarding this and actually pointing to some of the comments that were made earlier during the public comment and the sincere, the serious impact that it can have on a variety of students in schools, certainly those that sometimes are marginalized and disenfranchised. And, but I was very concerned as I read this, this particular one, because I was very surprised that it came up again. But allowing, the broadness of allowing district employees to potentially carry firearms very much alarmed me. That's all I have to say. I definitely do not support this particular resolution.
I think we can move to the next one.
Yeah, I just, to Kathy's point about our, our belief statement not being on there. Kathy and I discussed that briefly, and I looked to see if there was any way of, because our belief statement is supposed to be a guiding principle to all these resolutions, and it was left off the document that was received by all school boards, I briefly looked, and I'm going to have to go into the bylaws, too, if there was any way we could appeal. Especially this issue, because it's directly, that resolution's directly related to our resolution that received, I mean, that our belief statement that received overwhelming support last year. You know, I've got a serious problem with that because it's after the fact now, but, okay, we can move on. Number three.
I think we should oppose.
Number three states that Illinois School Board shall advocate for the creation of funding a school safety grant program at the state level that would assist school districts in the hiring of school resource officers or school security personnel for the protection of students and staff. SROs in the instance, in this instance, shall meet the definition in section ten dash twenty dot sixty-seven of the school code. School security personnel may include off-duty law enforcement officers or a law enforcement officer who has retired within the previous five years. School security personnel may carry a firearm in a school if they continue receiving the same ongoing firearm training as active police officers. Priority in the distribution of grants shall be based on both geography, school districts with lengthy response times from first responders, and financial need, tier-one and tier-four school districts based on evidence-based funding model that will receive the priority in the awards of this grant. And the recommendation by the resolution committee was do adopt.
So can you explain your oppose?
Originally, this, my first read on this sounded like a great idea. The state providing some resources to local school districts so that they could hire school resource officers to provide safety and security. But as I had a discussion right before we started it, it just pointed out to me that this could be broadened to include school personnel that is not as clearly defined as it is in this resolution. School personnel may include, doesn't say shall include, so it may include a lot of things, but it's, so, I think that this can be, the intent, the concept is important. But once you get into the particulars, it kind of loses its effectiveness. So I like the idea of providing, the state providing resources to to make our schools more safer in this regard. But it seems like there's an exception that would eat up the rule here.
So, just for clarification on Justin's point, that was a concern that I heard with that particular wording, "may include." I had a discussion with Ben Schwarm today. The reason, who is the chief attorney for I A S B and who is involved in all the resolutions that are submitted. The actual reason why this resolution was submitted is something that we advocated and I spoke for during the delegate assembly last year, in which I said to the direction from all of us that if we are serious about the protection of our children, that we would be more passionate at the state level to find funding for SROs. The language for "may include" was put in there because under state current statute, and I think it's important to know what an SRO is and to know what they have to do. So, an SRO is a fully licensed current police officer, and they have to go through a certification training course. The curriculum shall include the following areas, and this comes from the state statute. Child and adolescent development and psychology, positive behavioral interventions and support, conflict resolution techniques, and restorative justice techniques, education law, juvenile law, implicit bias, trauma-informed care, de-escalation techniques, including techniques for limiting the use of physical force and mechanical and chemical restraints, the mental, physical, and behavioral health needs of all children and adolescents, including those with disabilities or special needs, minimum of eight hours crisis intervention training for youth, and cultural responsiveness, in addition to them being a licensed law enforcement officer. The reason why the wording "may include" was put in there was to include off-duty law enforcement officers and retired officers within the past five years. Currently, those members do not qualify for SROs. So, an off-duty officer cannot serve as an SRO even though they're a full-time law enforcement officer and may have received this training. If they're off-duty, they cannot be an SRO. So, there are many, multiple school districts across the state that currently utilize off-duty officers, but this new statute that was put in place does not identify for off-duty officers or those retired within the past five years. Ben assured me that those are, the reason the wording, and he said, yes, it probably wasn't the best wording, but it was to "may include" an off-duty officer or an officer within the past five years, that still maintains all the training that's required of an SRO.
Well, I kind of agree with Ben. It's poor wording, because I think there's a loophole there. That, you know, the intent for me is really important. I have to think this one out. And whatever clarification you can get would be important to me, because that loophole does exist there.
Let me point out something that Kathy pointed out to me at the end of this resolution. The committee supported the premise of the proposal, but suggested revisions to the original resolution, especially in the areas of SROs. SROs are specifically defined in the state statute and must be referred to differently than other school security personnel. Also, only SROs are allowed to carry firearms in schools. The submitting district agreed with the suggested revisions. What are those revisions? It just tails off there. It's like they were trying to help fix the resolution, but they don't come forward with a better resolution. It's vague. And so, for that reason, I think, you know, we're all trying to figure out a better way to do this, but at the the month prior to the adoption of the resolution, we should have a better product at this stage to vote on. So even reading that paragraph, I still oppose.
There was one, there, and actually, I oppose because two paragraphs right before that were the rationale from the committee. Although it talks about primarily funding for SROs, it says that grant funds could be used for safety improvements in buildings, security equipment, x-ray machines, metal detectors, or school-based health centers. So, that got away from, the rationale got away from the SROs, which, which, that's what concerned me.
Any other questions or discussion in regards to this policy?
I will work on getting further clarification, although.
Yeah, I'm not sure if further clarification will help. That's the problem, because this is the one we gotta either support or oppose. And I agree with the objections. It's, it's not a law, so, it's not like they take this and make it a law, but it is the general direction, and I think that is a direction we want to see.
They suggested revisions. We don't know what they are.
No.
We don't have a new resolution. So, until I see that, I'm going to oppose.
Is four next, Mr. Wazie?
Yes. Number four. School district police force be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that would allow any school district who previously established a professional police force to re-establish a police force with all the duties and responsibilities of local law enforcement agencies. If you read through this one, Peoria is the only district that currently has this. So, this essentially grandfathers them in of maintaining, because in Peoria, apparently, the police force is not associated or part of the municipality, so they have their own professional police force that's licensed and certified like a regular police force. So this is just essentially for Peoria and grandfathered in Peoria. So, just wanted to clarify that.
So my, my issue and my questions about this one were, well, first of all, I'm like all for simplicity or whatever, and I see a hundred and forty current position statements. So, yeah, twelve more coming, two of which they said to oppose. So when I read through them, one of the ones that was to oppose was number eight. And what was the reason for opposing it? Well, because it was a local school board issue, like them deal with it themselves. So, I want these position statements to be something that is applicable to everyone in the state or most people or whatever, most districts. So when I read this, it's like, it, it says it is only related to districts who have previously established a professional police force. And that the only district that's ever done that is Peoria. So it's like, all throughout it, it's only one, local safety. So I, I don't want to vote for this one in a positive way, because I just think they need to handle it a different way and not put it on our I A S B stuff.
So let me rework the resolution. The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support resolution that will allow Peoria. It doesn't make sense.
Right.
Well, by assumption, no. It's just stating that we don't believe Peoria should have a police force, essentially.
I believe they should handle it some other way. This is just not something that should be a position statement for our association.
I broke down the same thing. It's local. Why is this, why are we, why are we considering this?
Legislation has happened for, you know, individual school districts before, so, yeah. We got some examples here. Yeah, so I don't understand why we would be using the whole delegate assembly to, you know, push forward something like this. It was a good point. Thank you, Lori.
Okay.
I just wanted to know what's the history then behind, why would they put it on if it's just affecting one district?
It's, it's, from what Ben told me, it was to grandfather them in to continue to use the same police force that they've, that they've been using.
I'm just surprised, like, so many school districts send in proposals, and they picked one that just affects one.
I asked that question, too, to begin myself.
Number seven. Be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation allowing newly elected candidates who have been elected uncontested to be sworn in or affirmed at the next regularly scheduled board meeting or special meeting held at least fourteen days after consolidated election. The recommendation was do adopt. Actually, maybe, I didn't have anybody that wanted to pull that. Did somebody want to discuss that?
I did.
Okay.
It's just kind of the same thing. Because I was trying to understand it, and I'm, I'm trying to think what would be the negative on that, but it says, then there's this law that has to be filed, and at the end, it says the Resolutions Committee suggested that the resolution be revised to make it clearer and to comply with other current laws. And this submitting district agreed, but I don't see that, I don't see the, I don't see how it is within the law, because it's saying as soon as they have their, you know, unofficial results, they can take office.
Well, yeah, I mean, I was always to understand that there had to be thirty days to certify the votes, right?
That's what they list as with Public Act ninety-three oh eight four seven in two thousand and four, that there's, you know, they have to count all the ballots. They have to, you know, ensure all the mail-in ballots are in and everything else.
In other words, this is just rushing it.
Well, it seems like it's not, I mean, they said they were going to make it clear to comply with the other current laws, but I don't see how it does.
Well, I, I think the caveat there is for board members that were elected in uncontested races.
Right.
If there's, there's no reason to wait for certified results if it's an uncontested race, you pretty much know they won.
Kathy's point, I believe, though, is that in order to change the resolution to comply with law, you have to change the other law. So you have to change the election law to allow for going down from twenty-eight days to fourteen days.
Well, that's essentially, it's, this just becomes a position of I A S B. It's not, it's not a, we're not changing the law here. We're not, you know, this is.
I know, but they can't do anything until they change the law, right?
Well, somebody would have to, yeah, somebody would have to submit a bill, one of the legislators, that has to do with this, and then our position or I A S B's position would be, yeah, we're okay with that, if, if we were to support it. So.
If they change the law, then, if they change the law, then any, you know, any uncontested seat could, but they would have to change the law. I mean, they, we even, just school board officials couldn't just do that if the law is not changed.
Right, no.
I mean, that's just like number one, right? I mean, number one, it's not legal to have other people carry guns, and to make that happen, you'd have to pass a law in the state. It's just the position of I A S B. So, the same thing here. It's a position, but you would have to have some laws changed to make it reality.
If, you know.
I think what we're struggling with here is the notes from the resolution committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because the resolutions are here to say we should change some laws or make a new law. And they're saying to change this law, but then they're saying to, the Resolutions Committee said, but it should comply with current law. So I'm, so, yeah, I'm confused by the resolution committee at this point.
Well, they also said they were to comply to the revisions, but we don't see also what those revisions were.
Yeah.
And I guess that's the feedback that you might want to provide back to them, is that this is not clear and that they ask for revisions and one cannot see them. Can they help us? And not all boards, I don't want to go here, but I'm going to a bit, not all boards look at these resolutions with the level of detail that we do.
Yeah. I, they're, well.
You know that last year.
I know that, you know, so I've served as our representative for, what, the past six years, and I know that to be the case, that there are many boards that show up, and they have not even had a discussion with the boards, so. Number eight, school board elections swearing in be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall allow newly elected members of Board of Education to be sworn affirmed by one of the following Board of Education President or Designee, the Clerk of one's county, or any presiding judge. The district rationale was, in the event of a newly elected board member is not able to be sworn in and affirmed with their board, they now have other options. So, go ahead.
Lori, look at the last line they have in there. Trying to address a statewide solution to a local problem did not seem prudent.
Right, that's why I'm like ironic, like, why do they say that here? And that other Peoria one is like.
They bring everything.
I noticed Peoria submitted several of these, so maybe there's a connection here.
So, I think what we're saying is our Resolution Committee at the state level is contradictory at best. Is that what I'm?
This is how regulated school boards are. We've got to have a discussion, and there's a law on who can swear us in. I mean, it's like ridiculous.
Well, so backstory on this. There was board members that were elected, and the current board would not swear them in, because they wanted to vote on an issue without the new board members that got elected. So, this is clearly a local issue and problem, that it's like, yeah, just stick to the statute.
I liked their last sentence. They should stick to that sentence.
Yeah, I underlined that, because I'll be bringing that up.
How about that's a new belief statement for us here?
I'm gonna clarify something. I'm not sure if I misunderstand what, a couple comments that have been made, but the committee does take in every resolution that is submitted, and they discuss each one of them. It's not like they go, oh, this isn't worth it, so we shouldn't even look at it. So, I just want to make sure.
As long as it's not a duplicate of what already exists as a position statement.
Yeah, and they normally worked with the submitting district to clarify it, or maybe, you know, pull it out, whatever. So, there is a process that they do.
Thank you for that clarification, Kathy, because I was mistaken. Thank you.
So, the, yeah, the Resolution Committee's recommendation on that one was do not adopt. Number 10. Be resolved, oh, this has to do with school board member compensation. Be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and encourage legislation that will give local school districts the authority to offer compensation to its school board members, and that's it. The district rationale was, while this type of resolution has been presented before, there are two basic foundations for supporting the option of compensation for school board members. It should be the individual local school board making the decision on compensation and not having this choice dictated by the state of Illinois. It is an argument for local control. Everything's coming down to local control. Second, there are 21 other states which have permitted local school districts to make up the choice on compensation. This resolution is, in its simplicity, does not have any other negative items attached to it.
And the recommendation is do not adopt.
Correct, yeah. Their rationale was the money should be spent on the students.
So, I'm in support of that one, and that is kind of a newer view, but I'm looking at.
You're against the position of the Resolution Committee?
I am, I'm supporting the resolution, so, I'm not for not adopting. We have been around a lot of conferences, and we have heard boards talk about how they can't find people running for their school board. Sometimes they are running with only, with a few members missing. We're looking at teacher shortage, so I feel like we're looking at a decline in the people who are invested in the school districts. I'm not saying money is an answer, but there is a huge time commitment to this job. And for some people, if there was some sort of compensation, maybe it would help them to be more a part of it, so that they could provide that support. So, I'm kinda, I don't think anybody should be making $120,000 for a part-time position, but I do think there are some, some times when we're kind of putting up roadblocks, because even in our area where it costs money to run, some people spend more money than others, but, you know, just that fact, it's kind of a, I don't see why we should have a roadblock, and I think every district should decide for themselves. I think that is a local control thing, and maybe that would help some people be more informed and increase our quality of board membership.
Any other thoughts or discussion?
I think Kathy raises some absolutely valid points. Having just gone through an election, the time commitment that was involved was overwhelming. Thankfully, I have flexibility with my work, because it would not be possible for somebody that doesn't have flexibility in their work. I mean, it would be very difficult, let's just say. You know, to Kathy's other point, I think there are a lot of openings or uncontested races that we see, even in the collar counties and DuPage, you know? And I value this position a lot. I don't personally do it to make money, never have, never will, but I.
Neither do we.
Well, no, I know, no, but what I, no, I'm, no, I'm not accusing you guys of this. But where I was going with that is saying that I think there has been a perception out there, and what I have seen in other areas, in the collar counties, is that people will run for Board of Education member to get name recognition and just use it as a stepping stone for another political position. And to me, there's a small part of me that could say, by not compensating board members, you're not valuing the position and the responsibilities of a school board member. Like, and no offense to our municipalities and our city councils, but what makes them any more important to get paid than it does school board members? We have just as much impact on a community as school board members, one could make the argument, as a city council does. So, I see Kathy's point on this. I don't know how I'm gonna, I need to think about it, though.
Yeah. Others?
I don't really have any comments. I'm opposed, I'm opposed to it. I just, I'm not convinced that even in those communities where there are races that go and oppose, that it's going to make someone determined to run, so.
Any others?
No, I'm all good.
Yahoo.
All I will just say is if, you know, I've got some things I'm gonna follow up here on, though, but if you want to email me personally and want me to take a look at something, let me know, or give me a call.
Okay, and we'll be voting on them at the next meeting. Quickly, updates, superintendent search updates. I have been in contact with our search firm. I've also been reading my journals, and our job posting is in the journals as promised. That's good.
Can you pass it around?
Sure. I also spoke with the search firm. Several candidates have applied, several, several, several candidates have applied. They indicated that generally, many more candidates will apply within the last two weeks of the job posting. That's very typical. Our job posting will close on November 4th. I have worked with Ms. Horvath, and Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan, and also with Ray and Associates to get a list of questions, suggested questions. I also secured the questions that were asked during prior superintendent searches. So, I will be sending those questions to you. Clearly, clearly, we have the opportunity to select the questions for our superintendent. Generally, interviews last an hour and 15 minutes with 18 to 21 questions. So, there'll be a selection of questions. I will get that information out to you. I would ask also that you look in the first week of December and keep that as clear as possible. That's when we will be conducting our first round interviews.
Concerts to go to there.
Now his blood pressure's up.
And maybe into the second week of December, so that Ms. Peel can attend the Prism concerts. So, the entire board can attend the holiday concerts.
This is why you return before nine.
So, it's important to make your calendars as clear as possible. I'll ask for dates that are available, that don't coincide with our concerts. So, that will be important. So, there we are with the superintendent search. Legislative update. The only thing that I have is that I do know the Property Relief Task Force has completed their work.
But have not released their report.
Have not released the report. The rumor is that there's nothing.
They don't know what to do.
Yeah.
Boy, this is a big problem.
There's nothing of real concern at this point that may affect the school districts. The general, I think, just of the report is there's a lot of issues to be discussed. And so, they don't have an answer. I don't know if you have anything else?
No, other than there's a forum on Friday that I think a couple of you are attending on the property texts.
Yes.
That Luda, Lend, and some other organizations are coordinating, so maybe you'll hear more on Friday.
Finally, Board of Education update. This Board of Education will be making a presentation at the conference in regards to working effectively as a team, using governance measures. I have worked, based on your input, worked with Lisa Barry Schwartz, who's wonderful in terms of coming up with a suggested PowerPoint. I reviewed that this afternoon with Dr. Sullivan to see if she had some suggestions. She did. And so, now, I will send that presentation to you for your revisions and edits. Again, we probably have to clear our calendar in early November, because it would probably be good for us to practice our presentation that we will probably be giving to 150 to 200 people before we get there. So, I ask, oh, no. Oh, no. We will be doing the presentation, as you know. Finally, last but not least, I did a reflection on last week in the school district. I did note, and this is kind of what happens in some form or another every week, but there was an IPPC meeting, there was a World Cafe, there was a kids' marathon, there was a half marathon and 5K, and there was a school who hosted a DiVale event that probably hosted 2,000 to 3,000 people on a Saturday night. And really, it made me reflect on all the people that make these events possible. You know, sometimes we think our administrators, but clearly, I'm at the kids' marathon, and there's the assistant principal, you know, who was there for four hours. I talked to the assistant principal who was over at Matia for seven hours setting the whole event up, and had probably two or three hours to go through. There's a number of volunteers, there's custodians, there's parents who all make, there's mascots who spent their time trying to make Indian Prairie School District just a really great place to go and be at. And so, to all those people, I know on behalf of the board, I speak for all of you, I thank them, everyone, just not the top-level people. Everybody contributes to this district, and I think it's important that we recognize them every so often, because just spending a week in the district, you realize what an amazing place it is. So, on behalf of the board, I want to thank everyone for every, what they do to make this a great place. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.